Hey, Kendall County and Bernie, Texas. This is John Tipton and my co-host.
Robert Sines.
And we are the Texas Examiner and we are excited to bring to you another candidate forum for Bernie City Council, which Election Day is coming up in May, I believe.
April 22nd is early voting?
Right. And then early vote, or that's early voting and then May 6th is actual, May 4th, May the 4th is actual Voting Day. So we are very excited and proud to be able to be the first to bring you the constituents and the citizens of Bernie and Kendall County, events like this where we can have two opposing candidates sit down and have a meaningful discussion about who they are.
Literally across the table from each other. I think it sets the, an example of, you know, people having respectful dialogue, which is something we needed, civility in today's world. And they don't have to agree, you know, they can disagree, but it, these are our county and city leaders who are going to take our, take us into the next.
Well, and hopefully they do disagree on something because that way we'll be able to have a differentiator. So.
Right.
But thank you, gentlemen, again for, for being here and showing everybody what civility looks like. We really appreciate that. Why don't we get started?
Yeah, let's welcome, well, let's welcome here to the Texas Examiner. We have Dr. Joseph Macaluso, incumbent City Councilman District 5, right? Thank you for being here, Doc. And we have Mr. Nick Newth. Did I pronounce that correct, Nick?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay, Nick Newth, running challenger for District 5 City Council. Why don't we start with, with our incumbent? Let's, uh, let's not assume that everybody knows him. Okay. So, so Dr. Macaluso, tell us a little bit about yourself and how you got started in politics.
Make it easy on you. Everybody calls me Dr. Mac. You don't have to say that whole name.
Okay.
No, I got started in politics, sort of in a different way. My wife and I have been living here for 18 years and we've been coming here for about 35 years because my wife's a native Texan. And I guess Buc-E's, I hate to say the B word, but it's Buc-E's. When the Buc-E situation arose, I went to city council meetings and I spoke a good bit and I had a number of people come up to me and say, oh, you should be in the city council. I said, well, no, I'm retired. I'm, I'm never, I've worked in politics as a citizen, but I've never been in politics. And so I ran and I ran in 2018. I lost to then Tim Handren, who eventually became mayor. And then I was asked to run again in 2019 and I did contested election I won. And I had to run again in 2020 because that wasn't a full term. Another contested election I won. And then in 2022, nobody ran against me. So this is my, I've done five years on, on the council and it has been a wonderful experience. I won't say it's always been an easy experience.
Of course.
It's been a wonderful experience. I've learned a lot. I'm a big believer that local government is really the most important government. I, I've dealt with Washington DC. I've dealt with state capitals and although they have their role, most people, you live in your community.
Sure.
Particularly doesn't matter.
Yeah, I'm gonna run into you at the local grocery store.
You, you drive on the same road, you go to the same stores, kids go to similar schools and all. So those are the issues that people live with day in and day out. The stuff we hear about in Washington, it's not that it doesn't impact us, but, so that's how I got into it.
Great.
I'm just happy to, I've always been, you know, I've been, I practiced surgery for 30 years.
Okay.
And I've always been a person of service and.
Fantastic. Where, where, where were you before you came to Bernie?
Uh, before I came to Bernie, I was in New Orleans.
Okay.
And as I said, my wife's a native Texan. We have family, I have family all over Texas, all over Louisiana too. But when it came time to move about nine months after Hurricane Katrina, everybody said, you moving, where are you moving to? I said, Bernie, Texas. And they're like, because I remember, and I know we talked about this, 18 years ago, Bernie is not what it. First started coming here in like 88, 89, Bernie was definitely not what it is today.
Right, right.
It's changed a lot, but you know, some, to some degree, if you're not growing, that's a biological thing. If your, your kids aren't growing properly, you say something's wrong. Well, communities that don't grow do have other issues. So this, unfortunately, we have a lot of growth, but that's a Texas issue. It's not just a Bernie.
Oh, well said. And schooling and training, your, your, your degree, your medical degrees?
Got a degree in biology and chemistry. I went to LSU Medical School in New Orleans. I trained in general surgery. I trained in transplant and I trained in pediatric and adult urology. And then I studied and did other training really all over the world. I did a little mini training courses, two weeks here in Europe, wherever, wherever the latest thing is being done.
Sure.
So that's kind of what I did. And I was a managing partner for 15 years on a very big group. And that was all good. I miss it to a degree, but I've made peace with that. It's a long story, but I had some health issues too. So I kind of let that go, but I've really enjoyed being involved here.
Wonderful, wonderful. Well, thank you for what you've done so far. And Nick, thank you for having the courage to run for office. It's not easy these days.
Oh, it's exciting. It's, yeah.
Both reaching out and making this possible. I think it's good to, you know, sit across from one opponent.
Yeah, congratulate you for standing. So many people just don't want to do it.
Right. It wasn't, it wasn't this. I was afraid, I was afraid of the studio. I've never been in studios. It's pretty impressive.
Oh, okay. Right on.
But a little bit about myself, I actually hail from a small town in the foothills of San Diego. I know that's, you know, a lot of people don't want to hear that, but that's where I hail from. Small town called Ramona, California. Right now, population's 22,000 people, less than Bernie, right? And it's not even a city, it's a town. I loved it. I, I grew up there. It's a small, I didn't appreciate exactly, you know, all the benefits of living in a small town until I was older. And now I have kids to raise and suffice to say, California, Southern California just has exploded in, in all the wrong reasons enough to where I sold my business. I, I was a owner and I ran an electrical sales business on behalf of electric manufacturers. And I sold that in order to move my family to a small town. I scoured, scoured the country, went to Tennessee, South Carolina, North Carolina, Texas. It was actually not on the list. My brother lives in, in San Antonio. He said, you gotta come check it out. And so it was a pit stop on the way. I don't mean to make it seem like it was like an afterthought because it certainly wasn't. It just wasn't on my radar, I think. Texas, I think West Texas and just, you know.
True desert.
For forever. Exactly, exactly. And boy, it was like.
Sagebrush and horses.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, right. And I was just blown away by Hill Country and everything it had to offer. It was reminiscent of my hometown, you know, small Queen Main Street. And so ultimately it was, it was, it was an easy decision. And we moved and the rest is history. Been here a year and eight months, almost two years. Political outsider, I have absolutely zero experience in politics. So people say, well, you're in sales. That's politics. Well, not at all. Cause you know, in sales, I sell big gray boxes, right? You know, transformer, switchgear, what have you. I don't, I don't influence or, 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 or craft policy, right? So a big difference there. So, uh, that said, you know, there, there's some similarities too. Because as a manufacturer's rep, I worked with, you know, on behalf of electrical manufacturers, I had to listen to them. I had to be their advocate. At the same time, I worked with end users and specifying engineers of record. I had to listen to their input and I had to be their advocate too.
And this was in California?
Yes, sir.
And since, how long you been here now, Nick?
A year and eight months, almost.
Year and eight months, okay.
So enough time to, 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 to get a feel for, well, I mean, I was gonna say get a feel for the growth. I mean, you can't, you can't, you can't not see it, right? It's explosive.
Right.
And.
Is that what, what's motivating you to run for office that?
Absolutely.
This growth is out of control, like you've seen in California, you think?
It is, it is. And I, and I see this kind of like a last, one of the few last bastions of, you know, small town. And, um, and that's, and that's kind of what motivated me to like start talking, getting more involved in politically active groups in town, um, you know.
So you jumped right in.
Tune into city, I had felt I had to. I felt, you know, I don't necess, I don't want to do this. I feel, you know, thought of calling, that sounds, you know.
Well, that's fair.
You know, that sounds, you know, over the top, but I felt compelled to do it for my kids' sake, just because.
Well, I mean, the, the pay is fantastic, right? A city council, what, what do you get paid if you get elected?
It was like a hundred fifty bucks or something like that.
Yeah, something like that.
Is it per meeting?
I call it, no, it's per month.
Per month, okay. Oh, well, I'm out.
Coffee, guys.
Meetings.
No, it's, it's not a lot, for sure.
Despite when people think it's not just two meetings a month, my wife can attest to that.
Right.
No changed from what it was 18, 20 years ago when I moved here. I mean, it's gotten to be much more.
How many more, how many meetings you have on, on average per month?
I couldn't tell you.
That many?
Because, well, it depends what you call a meeting. I mean, phone calls, emails.
Meeting constituents.
Meeting constituents, meeting other governmental officials. You know, there's just a lot of issues, I mean, between, there's so many moving parts. That's one of the things that I found interesting is that I think everybody, and I, I know I came the same way you did. Uh, I had some, I had some ideas about what I wanted to do. I think one thing I did learn is that whatever branch of government you get elected to, you really have to have three or four things you want to try to accomplish because that's about all you can do. There, it's so hard to, I always tell people, all I'm trying to do is move the Titanic to miss the iceberg.
Sure.
Not trying to sink the iceberg, I'm just trying to miss the iceberg. To your point about the growth and the problem we have is that, and you may have heard me say this earlier, Texas, I always talk, I call them the three commandments. Pro, pro, pro private property rights state, pro growth state, pro business state. And that's coming out of Austin. I don't mean the city. I mean the legislature to go. That's the, that's the milieu that we've lived in.
Yeah.
Local government. So every time we go to battle, a battle, it's not that we're making excuses about Austin doing this or that. The legislature doing this or that, but a lot of it is true. And so the county is even more impacted. I mean, I've been a big advocate for counties having more control. It would make everything easier.
Yeah, that's true. That comes up a lot. And Doc, I gotta ask you, because you talked about meetings, going back a little bit, I'm curious, your constituents, would you say it's the same group of constituents calling you all the time or is it, is it pretty?
There's, there's sometimes it is, but generally the ones that call frequently generally have a legitimate issue they're concerned about and they want to follow up on it.
Okay.
But I mean, I had a call in a long ago from a gentleman who I've never talked to before and he had a problem with the city. And I said, I don't know the exact answer to your question, but I know who to get you to talk to. And it got resolved in a couple of days. So I mean, that's a lot of what we do is just, I want to call it ombudsmanship. We just kind of get people from point A to point B, saying, I don't know the exact answer, but I'm gonna find out the answer.
And Nick, I gotta ask you, so you, you've been here, I mean, you, you, did you just jump into this yourself or did you have a group of citizens coming to you and saying, Nick, we need you to run for office?
It was myself. My, my mom actually, since I can remember, she always said, you gotta run for politics, you gotta run for politics.
Really? And this is your first time running for office?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So like I said, I don't want to do it. I feel compelled to do it. And you, I totally agree with you, Doc. Um, you know, you have to identify, you know, you can do this in business too. I mean, you can't get pulled in so many, I'm seeing different directions, right? It's an impossibility to get anything done, accomplished when you do that. So I've identified a few things, like I'm a big proponent of small government, limited government. And that was one of the things when I delved in, I look at Bernie, a town of 24,000, slightly bigger than my hometown of Ramona, 22,000 town, not city. And yet it's got a, you know, they spent a lot of money. I mean, the city hall is beautiful, beautiful, right? It's gorgeous.
It's huge.
But I mean, that just screams big government to me. And then you look at the number of employees at, at Bernie, I think there's probably between three and 400, probably close to 400 employees.
Wow.
Mostly about 300, but you have to remember about half of it because we have a, we are the only municipally owned utility in Kendall County. So you gotta, you can't really say that's all city employees.
Well, that's.
They are, they are indirectly, but they work for the utility, not for the city. So.
Right. And that's a for-profit entity, is it not?
Oh, no. It's, it's municipally owned. It's the citizens own. I mean, the city government owns. It's not for profit.
Well, does it not sell water outside of its, outside of, outside of the city, outside of the ETJ?
No, the only water that's going outside of the ETJ eventually is the George's Ranch, which I know people talk about all the time. But if you want to go there, I'd be happy to tell you the history of it. History of the county approved George's Ranch initially, not the city because it's in the county. Secondly, the George's Ranch folks knew that we have the right of first refusal to provide water on 46 East. We are surrounded on the, on all sides except east by Texas Water, which is a private water, for-profit water company. Their whole mission in life is to sell water. That's it. Our mission is not that. Our mission is to provide service. They came to us and asked us to provide water for 2,500 plus homes. We said, no, we are not doing that. That's outrageously intensive, too much density. They went back to the county, the county knowing that they had water, gave them the second alternative. The county has only two water things it can do. It can do, it passed the 10 acres and a well, not longer. It used to be six acres and one, that's 10 acres and a well. But if I've got 100 acres, I can see something by my property into 10 acre slots and that's, that's.
Still Penn Straits or nine, yeah.
The second fallback position the county has is if they have a water source, one acre and a septic system. If they have a wastewater system, for example, they get a wastewater discharge permit from TCEQ, they can put 10 houses on acre. County can't do a thing about it. So when they came to us the second time, which I've gone through this with the commissioners, we were sent a letter in 2020. Now, this is several years after this project was already approved and moving forward. So they were down from the 2,500 to approximately 1,000 or 900 or somewhere in that range. They came to the city. We were reluctant to do so, but if Texas Water was providing water out there, there would be no ability for the city to influence what happens on 46 East, which is, I mean, if you drove out this way, you'd see what's happening. And Texas Water doesn't care. I'm not, I'm not faulting them. That's their, that's their business.
So you all jumped in so you could have control and manage?
Before, yes. Like, so what, what were you, so what was your concern? Like, what was your concern if you had no control? Like, like what control do you now have that you wouldn't have? What was your fear?
Fair question.
Under the utility agreement that we have, which is not a development agreement, it's utility agreement, we were able to get, first of all, there's only 800 homes going in. We're pushing for less. Secondly, we were able to get all of the types of UDC things that we have without a UDC.
I vehemently, I guess the, the UDC, the UDC is 400 pages of fluff. It's a, it, it makes building within the city, you know, prohibitive. Or, you know, like unduly prohibitive. So people are like, have incentive not to develop, build infill within the city. In fact, I saw a recent city council meeting and there was a project behind HAB. You were familiar with it. You, you took issue with it and you were constantly said, hey, let's compare this against the, uh, against the UDC, kick it back and, and then, and then, and then you even, and then you, then you said, oh, well, you know, we could give, you know, um.
Variance.
Variance. It's like, oh, right, right. So the point, so that, I was watching this from, you know, from, from my computer. That's telling me like, man, this is a document that's hugely onerous. And, and everybody on the council, it was very apparent, didn't even know what was in this thing, right? It's, it's 400 pages and nobody knows what's in it. They're like, hey, well, you know, what is this project? You know, what, what part of this project is not in congruence with the, with the UDC as is?
And tell us what UDC means for the.
It's the Uniform Development Code, Unified. So it's, it's a compilation of all, you know, I don't know, guidelines, building codes, parking space.
A lot of paper.
Yeah, it's a lot of paper.
Right.
And I think it's, uh, so, so I actually think it's discouraging growth or development within the city. And I think it's the city's, you know, right to develop the city. I actually want Bernie to develop inside, right? I want big, beautiful buildings, buildings that were maybe are dilapidated. It'd be nice to see those refurbished, you know, make it really kind of a quaint town, right? Opposed to, so all this growth that could otherwise be taking place in Bernie is moving out, outside of Bernie where it's not subject to the UDC.
Okay.
It's, it's easier to develop. And that, that's true of all counties everywhere. It's, it's easier to get things done in the counties, correct?
Correct.
I mean, nobody can deny that.
The UDC is not the reason why people are developing the county. They're developing in the county because number one, people are selling their land to developers, which is their right. Number two, developers are exercising their Texas private property rights to develop. And number three, the county has far less rules, which you're correct about. But that is an issue that many of the people in Bernie have taken with previous city government, that there was very few rules and there was too much development and no control, no tree organs, no this, no that. And the, prior to the UDC, all of these things you're referring to were segmented into different things. The goal of the UDC, which we knew was difficult, was to try to put together all these things into at least one package. Now, when the UDC was passed, and I mentioned this previously, it was strict. It was designed to be strict because, as you know, just raising kids. If you make it easy, it's too hard to make it hard. If you make it hard, it's always easy to loosen up. And we, we've done a lot of things. For example, on the infill stuff, I mean, you mentioned infill, but I just look at Oak Park, look at Oak Park, which used to be in my district. I mean, we had two vacant gas stations from the 1920s. They've been sitting there for decades. We had old motor cords from the 30s and 40s, just a rat trap sitting there. Go look at it now. You've got a beautiful home. You've got a beautiful business, which is a great asset to the community. The other, you've got four new homes going in. So I don't totally agree that it's too difficult to build in the city. It is not. I wouldn't say it's a cakewalk, but I can tell you for a fact that every time I've dealt with somebody with an issue building in the city, if you actually, if they actually reach out and talk to you and you go to the, the planning department and you find out what the real issue is, because a lot of times it's communication. And we find out what the issue is, just like the gentleman who called me not long ago from your neighborhood, in fact. And he had an issue with the city. And I said, well, let's find out what it is. I don't know what your issue is, but I'll find out. And we did. I got him in touch with the planning department. He had a face-to-face meeting. He called me back.
So as a, as a city councilman, you, you can, you can help our viewers if they live in your district and they have a, they're gonna build a home or remodel. Is it a good idea to call your city councilman and ask for advice?
If you're having trouble, I mean, I, I, I have read the UDC, believe it or not, all 400 pages. And I will be the first to tell you, I can't memorize it all.
Right.
Because first of all, a lot of it also gets into engineering issues, gets into water issues, engineering issues, stormwater issues, et cetera. So I mean, some of it is based on input from experts in those areas. But yeah, I mean, when you have any issue, that's what the council members are there for, to be called and at least try to be a director to get you to the right spot. Doesn't mean we have the answer. That's, that's absolutely true. The answer is not always easy either. Sometimes the answer is no, which is hard. I understand.
Well, back to the UDC. I mean, I think it's, I, I understand the, the logic behind it. I think it's worthwhile. I think it's important that we have some, some semblance of, you know, a comprehensive plan, whatever, but it needn't be, well, I, I don't want to harp on the number of pages, you know, that's silly. But I think now that it's established, adopted, I think we need to go to work at just kind of whittling it down. Big government in Bernie, I, I, it's, it's again, compared to my small town, you know, 22,000 people, town, not city. We didn't have a $22 million city hall. We didn't have 350 employees, you know, maybe a quarter of what we're making, six figures.
Well, let me interrupt you for a minute. At the city hall, I'm not gonna take the blame for the city.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not blaming you. I'm just saying.
That is, that is.
That thing was, it's, it's beautiful.
First of all, the city hall was put to a vote by the citizens of Bernie. How about it against it? It's a bond issue. I know it was too expensive. At that time, under Texas law, cities could do a certificate of obligation. And that's what the city did then. They went and did an independent certificate of obligation to build the city hall. City Hall is beautiful. I, I, I concede your point about the size and expense of it, but the fact is it's there. It's there. Now, when I came on, one of the things I made clear to the new mayor and to the new, to the then Ron Bowman, the longtime city manager, is that if there's a civic thing that's needed, if we need a fire station, if we just need it and we, we can't rely on the voters to understand that, then we just have to bite the bullet, accept responsibility and do the certificate of obligation. But if we're gonna go to the voters with a civic project, whatever it is, and they voted down, we are not gonna come back and do a CO, which was over the city hall. So I mean, that was made very clear and that will not, that, first of all, it won't happen again because the laws have changed. Cities can do a CO, but only under certain circumstances. The legislature changed that. So just want to be clear, the.
I'm not, I'm not saying it was your doing or, or I'm not even like comparing, contrasting. I honestly don't know your, what, what you voted relative to the city hall. I'm just saying it's there. It's big. Local Bernie government isn't small by any stretch of the imagination. That's, that's 350 employees granted to the utility, you know? But that's, you know, that's, if you do the math, how many city employees per, per capita, right? I mean, that's a lot. And it's, and, and, and the UDC is one of many, but I, you know, I want to get in and I want to like look at every tool that, that the city produces, comes up with, right? And, and, and I always say there's a transparency issue and people misunderstand what I, or misunderstand what I mean by that. It's, everyone has access to these city council meetings. Everybody has access to city council. You know, they're televised. You can go, right? And, and a gentleman told me the other day, we don't have a transparency issue. We have an engagement issue. So I'm engaged. I want to get engaged.
Sure.
But at the same time too, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I see the transparency issue is, is being very different. So I think the, the, um, what's not transparent is, are these tools and, and for example, the UDC, I recognize it as a tool. It's a mechanism for growth. So they implement all these things that sound well and good, but really if you get down to it, there, there's, there's a motivation behind it. There's, it, it's a means to an end. It's a mechanism for growth. And I, and I recognize mechanism. And, and that's what I want, if and when I get in, I want to look at everything. And I, and that's gonna be the first question I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a, base every decision on, is this a mechanism for growth or not? And if it is, then I'm gonna be leery of it. Cause I think growth is expand, growth doesn't happen, right? There's, there's mechanisms behind growth and I, from what I can tell, they're all in place and it's happening, right? And the Buc-E's, I mean, I hate the Buc-E's too. I don't like the Buc-E's.
I don't hate Buc-E's. I just don't like the location, but that's a different story.
Yeah, right. I actually love the clean.
But the thing, but the thing you're alluding to, mechanism for growth, the city is not the mechanism for growth. I have to say that is not correct. The city's.
You don't think the UDC and its, and its, and its exercise of, you know, it's, it's kind of, does it leverage water?
You just told me that the UDC is preventing growth, that it's, it's onerous to growth. It's too hard to grow. You just told me that.
No, it's, it's forcing growth outwards in ETJ in the county. It's, it's, it's pushing it out. It's forcing Peter Leggo to develop outside.
Tracks of land are within the, the city limits of Bernie to develop those kinds of subdivisions.
There, there aren't any.
Well, there, 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 there you go. So that's why the subdivisions are outside. What you're really talking about is a small group of people who are upset about the ETJ. That's what, that's what this is all about, the ETJ and the thoroughfare plan. So the bottom line is the, the UDC is, is an issue, but it's an issue that has been addressed, is being addressed. We always envisioned it as a living document, was never the constitution of the United States. It can be changed. It can be altered. But to say that it, on one hand, it's hindering growth and then to say that it's, it's causing growth is not correct.
It's no, it do, it's, it's redirecting growth. It's hindering growth within the city's limits and it's redirecting it outward. And that's the urban sprawl that I find so off-putting.
No one, but no one who is building an infill development is building a thousand homes.
No, I, I agree.
So I mean, that's, that's, that's not urban sprawl. That sprawl, that's infill and we're getting infill.
No, urban sprawl is a thousand homes that just continues.
But that's not because of the city.
It is the city because it.
Explain to me how the city did it.
It wants to be close. It wants, it needs, it needs access to water. It needs access to the 10.
Okay.
It needs access to, to all the.
Esperanza, which was before I was on the council, before I was on the council, somebody sold their land. They developed Esperanza. Esperanza had 1,200 acre feet contracted from Canyon Lake. They donated that or ceded that to the city of Bernie. So at the moment, Esperanza is not costing the city any water. Plus, as part of the deal, they had to put in purple pipe. We have one of the very few recycling plants for water, certainly for a city of our size in Texas. It's a model. And so all of those areas on 46 East, ranches at Creekside, Esperanza, they're on purple pipe. They're on recycled water, gray water for, for their irrigation and not on potable water. Secondly, all these other developments, WCID 3, Cooley Farms, not in the city, not in the city. 13 plus 100 acres where there was one house. And now there's eventually probably gonna be 1,300 houses for all we can tell. So the city worked with them for a year. They're not in the city. How did that happen? It happened because the state legislature, directed by our state senator, approved WCID 3, approved WCID 4, approved WCID 2. Not the city, the state legislature. Those are independent taxing entities. They're almost like quasi-governmental entities. They can tax and do bonds. So the city's position on this is that we didn't create any of those things. We were felt left to deal with them, as is the school district. In Esperanza, we've got 20 acres donated to the school district. In Cooley Farms, we couldn't get it donated. We've got 20 acres set aside to build a new elementary school out there. So the school district, the county and the city are all in similar positions. When these developments occur, the county's not out there beating the bushes to develop it. The school district's not, the cow creek's certainly not, and the city is not. But once it occurs, we are stuck with the, the results. I mean, for example, transportation, there's been one road in 50 years built in Bernie. One major new road. That's the Herf Road bypass. That's it. There's been road construction. There's been road improvement. There's been no new roads.
You mentioned bypass, but it's hardly a bypass. That's the most congested part of.
It was built by, it was built by the county.
Right.
Built by the county and it was designed.
In conjunction with the city? Did they have, did the city have?
Yes, yes, of course.
Well, right. So did the city have commitments that they didn't fulfill?
No, no, which, which first of all.
I heard it was supposed to connect to 10 and that never happened. And that was the city's doing. Maybe I, maybe I, I could be ill-informed.
The issue, the issue is, there are several issues with Bernie's transportation when going to that. The main issue with Bernie's transportation, one of the main issues is text dot. Text dot controls 46, which goes right through the middle. Text dot controls 87, which is Main Street. Text dot controls I-10. So we are in a situation, text dot controls Bandera Road, part of Blanco Road.
It's all around you.
So basically we can't even put a crosswalk on Main Street without going to text dot for permission. So there are a lot of transportation issues where there, there are things we would like to do. And I, I point to Oak Park again, where we did have some control. I think Oak Park's turned out beautiful.
I had one gentleman say that there are things you can do, like you could implement signage, that could redirect heavy traffic, you know, to, you know, exit the South Main Street, exit, take curve to River and take, take it to 46. They just want to put up signs.
Well, but we can't put up signs.
Why?
Cause it's text dot. It's a.
Have we, have we asked text dot? Has the city asked text dot?
The city asked text dot for many things. You just, I don't think.
Well, have they asked them, have they asked them for that in particular?
I believe they probably have because we're already working on a redesign.
Believe or you know, I don't, I don't know.
Well, we're working on a redesign of that whole, that is the worst intersection in Bernie.
Correct.
Okay. But why is that?
Because it didn't get done how, how originally, how it was originally designed.
But why is it really that way? Because you have.
Just answered you.
Well, you have a high school right there. Part of our problem is we have two.
But it was designed, it was, it was the design, it wasn't just the connectivity or lack thereof. The design of that intersection originally, if you go back and look at the documents, it wasn't supposed to look that way. And I think that was by design. It was to, to, again, I talk about a mechanism for growth. That's a built-in deliberate decision to force, you know, kind of, kind of create a bit of a quagmire and, 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 and force sprawl.
How is it forcing sprawl?
By deliberately creating congestion.
It's not deliberate. I can assure you it's not deliberate.
Well, I can assure you, so to, to totally change, change course of a plan of a, of a, of a major road in the middle of it?
I, well, first of all, I.
That wasn't deliberate or there wasn't any.
I have to say, I have to say this.
You're not that naive, doctor.
I'm not naive, but I also know that I didn't plan it, but I will.
No, I know. I'm not saying you didn't. You should, you should recognize it.
Change that. I wouldn't have built the bridge that way, Nick.
Right.
Bridge is too low. Okay. There are a whole, a whole lot of issues with bridges, right?
So we could, we could rebuild that bridge.
But rebuilding the bridge will not solve the problem.
Reconfigure the bridge and they, and they connected roadways and.
You need, you need to move the intersection.
And, and, and.
That's our conclusion, I think.
You could implement signs.
It, it is.
That got flooded. I remember when they were constructing it, it was not done right to begin.
Right.
Absolutely.
Didn't anticipate this growth.
And that there's city owned land. We're looking at possibility of moving that intersection, the actual red light intersection, where they're up. To allow that to be more of a natural pathway. But the problem is, and you also have to, every time we do that, just like the, the five-point section on Main Street, we have to go through text dot. Now, you say, have we approached text dot? You watch text dot bill. We have to go through text dot. Now, you said, have we approached text dot? You watched text dot bill I ten the last ten years?
I have, I, again, I, I come from California. I'm amazed at text dot's ability to get, to get stuff done, honestly.
Well, they.
Caltrans is, it upgrades to a snail's pace and this is, it's impressive.
But they get it done, but we have communication with text dot almost every week during that process. And I can tell you. You, you can work with text dot, but they also have their own agenda and their own method of moving forward. And although we work with them, we can't control text dot. We cannot control what they do or how, but their timeline is, we can encourage, we can. Pajole.
Well, that's because priority, Bernie isn't a priority to text dot, I don't think, and nor should it, nor should it be. It's a small town and it should stay that way. So we need to. You know, that, that, that's ultimately what I wanna, wanna accomplish. You gotta recognize these built in mechanisms for change and they're very deliberate. I disagree with you there. That nothing is done like that and oh, you know, I wasn't involved or, oh, it's, you know, it's, it's, the, 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 the road that you know where is. Is paved with good intentions, right? So if it sounds good, you, you also gotta take a second look and understand, you know, what is really, what is really behind it? And I think it's a trigger for growth.
You're suggesting that the whole.
Mechanism for growth, excuse me.
So Bo region was designed by the city. As a base in cooperation with the county building that road to relieve congestion in downtown Bernie. Right now, downtown Bernie still remains too congested.
But it, but it caused, so they built it to relieve congestion and yet it caused more congestion. Because it didn't get built according to the original plans. The original intent was.
Really believe that when the city has grown, when I moved here with seven or eight thousand people, almost twenty five thousand people, you think it's just that interchange that caused the, caused the congestion?
No, I'm just saying that that is the most congested intersection.
I disagree.
Right.
I don't disagree. So what, the solution, the solution is probably forty, fifty million dollars.
And that's what I was gonna ask you, Nick, a, a.
The voters and ask for forty, fifty million dollars and to, to support that change?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying that.
That's the reality though, Nick.
Okay.
It's easy to say it needs to be changed. We had the first new bond issue, which I pushed from day one on the council. The only reason it got delayed was because of COVID. We haven't had a bond issue since two thousand and seven, which I voted for, as did sixty plus percent of the citizens. To improve quality of life sidewalks, it said, we bought the land for the park on Adler back then, two thousand and seven. Just since, other than skate park, nothing's happened. Okay? Pushing for a bondage. We had the first bondage from fifteen years past and we, I wanted to make it bigger because I wanted to include two new fire stations. One on the east side, one on the west side. It was felt that the voters would think that was too much. So that's been put on the back burner. Not, not that it's not being pursued. It's just not in that bond issue. So the voters overwhelmingly passed a thirty six million dollar bond issue for the entire redo of Adler Road. The entire, the finishing of that beautiful park, which is gonna have all kinds of stuff in it and the redo of five or six worst streets in Bernie. Bernie has a street code for, for streets that are bad. And some of these streets in Bernie, on their hundred point scale are five or a ten. They're terrible. And so that bond issue the citizen voted for is the first one in fifteen years. And I'm also happy to say, if you look back at the tax rate for the city of Bernie, go back ten years since twenty fourteen or even further. The tax rate in the city of Bernie from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty two, the tax rate never changed. It went down in twenty twenty three. It went back up to basically what it was for the previous eight years because of the bond issue. So the tax rate for the last ten years has hardly changed. Now what has changed.
Glad you said it.
What has changed is property values.
Appraisal.
Yeah, they've gone sky highs.
Whose fault is that?
You gonna blame that on the city? We don't have any.
No, no, but no, but you, but you, 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 you hold up, you prop up, like the, the tax rate hasn't changed. At the same time, you acknowledge that. Home values have gone up markedly. So that's a lot, that's a, that's a big influx of, of tax revenue, no?
It's more revenue, but.
It's more revenue, so I would like to see that tax rate down, you know, that, that, that there should be a decrease commensurate with the increase in property values. Where does all that money go? It might, it might be able to, to redo that, that, that intersection we're talking about, or, 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 or at least, you know, do something.
One sense of sales.
Within, within the city?
One, one cent of sales tax raises about roughly a hundred and fifty to twenty thousand dollars a year.
And you're saying it costs thirty million to do?
Well, every bridge, we're looking at bridges for, and so all, if you look at Bernie when it floods, Bernie turns into islands.
Right.
And one of the things we'd be concerned about is what happens with. Senior citizens, with people with medical problems, with other issues. What happens if we have a flood and we do have floods? Where all of a sudden, first responders, fire, police, et cetera, had to navigate these, these impassable waters.
Real quick, this just, this shit just occurred to me. I talked about, I wanted, everything I, that I'm presented with, is it a mechanism for growth? That, that handling of the increase in home values, meanwhile keeping the tax rate the same, that is a mechanism for growth. Cause it's pricing a lot of people out of house and home. They can't afford property taxes because they're, through, no, no fault of their own. I'm not gonna sign blame. But they can no longer afford property taxes and they gotta go elsewhere. So that's a mechanism for growth. You're bringing in, you know, introducing, you know, people are leaving, make paving room for, 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 for incomers, right? Do, 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 do you recognize that as?
Do I recognize people leaving Bernie?
No, do, do you recognize it as, 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 as a mechanism for growth? I mean, I, it just occurred to me, so I haven't fully thought, thought it through, but, but tell me this. Do we, do you agree that it, you know, home values go up, tax rate should stay the same and not go down commensurate with the increase?
Not necessarily, no. Depends on the service level the community expects. So when you say tech lower, what do you wanna cut? Tell me which you wanna cut. I know you wanna cut administrative people. I, I got that. So do you wanna?
It's not a cut. It's, you could maintain previous, uh, tax revenue.
Let me explain something. When you do zero based budgeting, zero based budgeting, really do it. That means there's no growth. There's zero. So I start with ten dollars and next year, that's all in the spend is ten dollars. That's not realistic in a community in a region that's growing. One of the fastest in the entire United States, not because of the city. People are not moving to Texas because just of Bernie. The whole Texas triangle has exploded. Most people moving to Texas are moving between Dallas, Austin, San Antonio and Yext and somewhere in there. Waco, whatever it is, Bernie, so it's not like Bernie is this, oh.
No, it's not. No, no, it's not.
Dealing with the growth situation fueled by certain policies. And when there is a growth situation, it requires. A moderate approach to dealing with the situation. And to say we're just gonna have zero based budgeting as if that is the solution, it is a, it is a mechanism. To make sure your budget is correct and I will point out to you that city of Bernie for thirty six years has received the. The, uh, uh, financial excellence award from the state. They just introduced a budgetary award. We received a. Budgetary award of excellence from the state. So I mean, we are doing the right things. Now you can argue that the, the budget's too high. Okay, that's fine. But if you look at the budget last year, which is higher than the previous years, half of the budget's utility, first of all. So that's not really the city, that's utility. Secondly, a large part of the increase in the city budget last year is because of the bondage. And we're spending eighteen million dollars of that thirty six million dollars in the next two years, this year and next year, to do these projects that the voters said they, they approved for. So I mean.
It's a big budget for twenty four thousand people. I'm just, I think it's, uh, I think it's astronomical. And I think we should, I think we should, uh, you know. Roll back government if and where possible, you know, I think it's, I think it's way too intrusive. It's kinda, I, I, I wanna pick your brain on the E T J too, cause I, I was unfamiliar with, you know, that, that concept didn't exist where I came from, right? So I. I wanna, in, in your words, what is the purpose of E, E T J?
And, and that's a state issue, that the, the E T G, E T J is created by the state.
I get that. So, so you wanna, you, you want more county control of E T J, correct?
I'm happy for the, well, I'm happy for the county to have control. All of effect, as part of the Hill Country Alliance Leadership Group, last year I was one of only twenty people asked to be on. From the eighteen Hill Country Counties, along with mayors and county judges, commissioners, Commissioner Ousian from the county was on. Um, we talked about the growth issue. I've been advocating for the, the legislature, uh, through them to, to put together a program to. Get the eighteen hun, eighteen Hill Country Counties called a region of special interest to give these counties more control. Cause the legislature is not gonna give all two hundred and fifty plus counties in Texas more control. Not gonna happen. They're at war with Dallas, Houston, San Antonio and Austin, et cetera. Doesn't matter what that issue is, but, so we are caught in a crossfire. So why can't we control more development? Why can't the county have more control out?
You're saying we just need to go after a smaller bite of that pie?
At this time to approve sweeping.
Right. The state won't allow it, right?
Right. So I'm trying to find a way to get all the Hill Country Counties together to do that. Not easy to do. It's like herding cats. But, um, the E T J issue is this, we've had the E T J agreement, an interloble agreement since two thousand and seven. Same agreement, city did not force that down anybody's throat. That was approved by the county commissioners, approved by the city long before I was involved, long before any of the. Current commissioners or the judge was involved. That was approved, renewed, all along, no problem. There've been a few changes here and there, nothing major. When the new court came in, prior to the new court coming in, they approved a new agreement with some modifications, which we were fine with. The new court said, could you just hold off on that? So it said, fine. So we've been waiting fifteen months for a response. We finally got a response. And we're in the process of working through that to see how we can work with them to deal with it. The issue is this. In the E T J, I don't really care who controls it. What I do care about is who has the most ability to control it. Because to say. Oh, well, we just don't want anything to happen in the E T J. As a property, and a lot of people say, well, I don't want any control over my property. But I also don't want you to allow my neighbor to sell their property for a development or a concrete plant or a batch plant, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that, it's, it's talking about both sides of your mouth. I don't want property rights for me, but not for you.
Right.
Well, that makes it very difficult. Cause either you have to have a uniform system where somebody's in charge, whether it's the city or the county. Can't have different rules for different plot. First of all, there's illegality sometimes. You can get charged with illegality, treating one plot of land different than about the same name zone.
When you say that, Doc, is that the majority of the people in the E T J that are saying that or is that just a? Just a, a, a small group of people? So people in the E T J need to get more involved in, right?
I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that have come up. And this goes back to the U D C to your point, that we've recognized there were some things and we've changed some things. I mean, particularly inside the city, there were some things that were too onerous on people to do even a small little patio or something. We've worked all that out. Is it perfect? No, it's not perfect. The government is never gonna be perfect. It doesn't exist. Human beings are not perfect, so government will not.
It never gets smaller unless somebody's in and makes that a priority. It's, it's only getting.
That, that seems to be your goal, Nick, right? You, you, you're about small government.
Yes, sir.
So when you get elected, city councilman, what are?
I'm gonna shed a bright light on all these mechanisms for growth that I think are baked in.
That's your first, that's your first priority, is you wanna come in and point out wherever you think there's a little, little too much fat, right?
Not, not just fat, but also like, you know, motivate, you know, like, like, I call it mechanisms for growth. I think that, I think the E T J, like, I, I feel like that. Is a mechanism for growth where incrementally can let the city extend its fingers.
Do you want the city out of the E T J?
I think that would be fine.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Um, how do we do that? The, the, I was talking to someone earlier about this, Dr. Macaluso, that. Someone brought up the idea of, could, could the E T J, is it legal? Could it be incorporated into the city through? And, and, and annexation is not the word I'm looking for, but, but make it part of each district. That would be considered annexation, right? That's illegal.
Cause annexation's okay, forced annexation's not.
Okay, and if they vote for it then, right?
Right, have forced annexation.
Okay, so right, so is that a possibility if, if the voters of the E T J, if people voted, we want to be?
In the city?
In the city?
Well, sure, but then they pay, but here's the, here's the rub. They don't pay city taxes. They don't pay city property tax.
Okay.
Cause it's out in the city.
So this is something that.
But by the same token, they also don't have a vote, right? And things, you know.
We're not, we're not taxing them.
Gotcha.
So you mentioned Esperanza earlier. They're taking water from, from, not from the city. I, I, I can neither pray nor deny.
But the water's from the same source, Nick. It's from Canyon Lake. It all, it doesn't, it doesn't come out of the sky literally, that's some degree.
I mean, don't be silly. Of course, I, I understand that. Canyon Lake is, is like at record lows. Wells are drying up. Meanwhile, you know, there's, there's, there's developments that are planned and ongoing. It's interesting, Esperanza. Outside the city, al- almost like supported, I won't say subsidized, but supported, it almost feels like there's city is supporting development. In, in the middle, in the middle of, outside of its jurisdiction, outside of its jurisdiction. In the middle of a, of, of a severe drought. And I, I just don't understand why.
You have, I'm sorry, I have to disagree. That is a false statement. How is the city, how is the city supporting growth at George's Ranch? When George's Ranch was already approved by the county?
I didn't say George's.
Esperanza, right?
Esperanza was already, it wasn't the city.
So what is Esperanza? So it's not, is it part of the county or is it part of the city?
It's in the E T J, it's not in the city.
They don't have a city councilman representing Esperanza, right? People, that's interesting, John, cause people in Esperanza that I've spoken to say, I ask them, who's your city council? Is it, or? Or they think they have a city councilman.
They have one.
They don't, if you live in Esperanza, you don't have a city councilman. It's your county commissioner.
We're not annex Esperanza.
We can't.
Why?
It's, it's forced annexation.
It's not forced. If, if, if the developer wants to, is, does the developer not want to and why?
Under Texas law, which has been changed, only the owner of a property or the majority of the owners of property.
Have to vote on it.
Can vote to be annexed and it's voluntary annexation. We cannot force an annexation.
I, I'm not talking to forced annexation.
Well, that's what, well, well, they can vote, they can vote tomorrow and say, come to the city, we wanna be annexed.
So when you say that, you say the residents of Esperanza or the developer?
Whoever has.
Well, I think the developer should stay out of it. I think the residents should.
Well, here's the reality though, when these developments occur, which you're forgetting is that when a development occurs, the first five homeowners that are there. The developer still owns most of the land. So at some point in time, the developers gradually cede control to the H O A, whatever. The organization is that's monitoring that subdivision. But until that point, the developer's involved because they still own a large segments of the land. So yes, they do get a vote. Their land owns, it's Texas property rights. I mean.
Well, the gentleman, I think we've, we've had a spirited discussion.
Yes, yes. Sounds like these guys are both passionate about what they're doing.
Absolutely. And I think our viewers have a pretty clear, uh, I mean, two distinct, uh, different approaches. So there's, there's, shouldn't be too much confusion, I don't think, so.
So I, I guess, so let, let's, let's wrap it up with, with, uh, some closing remarks. We'd like, uh. We'd like you, uh, Nick, to tell us, uh, I think we got an idea of why you're running, but, uh, tell the viewers why they should elect you over our incumbent.
Elevator pitch.
Yes, just give us your elevator pitch. Well, I just, I, I think, uh, I, I, Bernie's almost like a tale of two cities, right? Except for two city, you know, two cities are, are in fact two good old boys clubs with different philosophies. And Texas is famous for its good old boys club, right? So one wants preservation. Uh, the other wants development, growth, oilmen, right? The one, you know, that, that's how I see it. And it's just, it's just, it's, it's, it's a battle. And, um, I side with preservation and, and, uh. A conservative growth model, conservative growth model, being like, let's not extend. Let's relinquish more control to, you know, what makes, you know, to, to those who really, you know. Uh, relish in what Hill Country has to offer. And, um, focus our time and efforts as a city on, on the city of Bernie within, within its confines. I'd like to see the E T J go away, cause it makes a zero mistake. The only way it makes sense to me is if it's a mechanism for growth, and I think it is. But I'd like to see that go away. Let's relinquish control of that to the counties. Let's focus, let's, let's look inward and allocate dollars, time, energy. And to make it Bernie, you know. Even more beautiful.
Well, thank you, thank you, Nick, and thank you again for throwing your hat in the ring to run. It's, uh. That's admirable and I wish more people would run for office. Uh, Dr. Macaluso, uh. Tell us why the, the, your constituents should reelect you and why, um, you know, uh, what your plans are for the, uh, the next go around, if you do get reelected.
Well, first of all, I'm not a big government conservative, been a conservative all my life. However, when you're in a growth situation, you have to have resources allocated to deal with it. In the U D C and in the zoning changes we did, if you look at mechanisms for non-growth. Are the overlay districts. Overlay districts were designed specifically to give us more control for historic preservation, various corridors. I ten corridor, which was a big issue for me, cause I don't want to turn into Katy, Texas, which I fear greatly, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we have these mechanisms in place to improve the situation. Going forward, I wanna see us complete the bond issue that we've done. I wanna see us complete the issues that we've raised with the corridor enhancement, which I. Good money set aside for, on the very first day in, in office. And that's been growing. We have a new handbook to deal with. Text dot to deal with developers, whether it's commercial or real estate or, uh, residential, to improve that. Uh, I wanna see expansion in the historic district. We're working on that. Uh, not everybody wants that. Because when you have historic designation, some people say that's infringing on my property rights, cause now there's certain things I can't do. So there's all this balance that you have to deal with. Because to your point, yes, there are some people who wanna preserve and some of their. Some of the preservationists want nothing to happen. They want no growth, which I understand that, but. Not happening. Then there are others who wanna grow. That's why we pivoted at the E D C. The E D C is looking only at entrepreneurship. Not looking at big box. I'm not a big box fan. Big box is down the way. Go right to the rim. It's not fourteen, fifteen minutes away. You don't need a big box store here in Bernie. So the reality is that we are doing the things that I think the public has said they want us to do within the confines of the law. Both in the city, state, federal law that we have to deal with. And there's a lot of moving parts. The water issue is a big issue. Uh, we're the only municipally owned water utility, utility of any kind. Bandera Electric, Perdernales Electric are co-ops for profit. Texas Water is definitely for profit. Cooley Farms is getting water from Saws, not from Bernie. So I mean, all these things are happening in an environment where the county historically has had very little ability to control anything. So we have been trying to manipulate things as best we can to deal with that. I am all for the county having more control. Um, they, and the judge and I have met several times. I've told him that repeatedly. I would be, love it if you had more control over the county.
Well, great. Well, thank you, thank you, Doc. Uh, thank you, Nick. And, uh, we really appreciate that, uh, you guys took over the show and.
Absolutely.
I didn't have to talk. No, no, we loved it. We, we, I love, I love the exchange between, uh, the two of you and I wish we had more guests like that. Uh, and, and, and thank you gentlemen for being such gentlemen today and, and, and your, and your disagreements. Because, uh, you obviously are coming from two different directions and I think the viewers saw that and, uh. Uh, we need, uh, the viewers to get out and vote. Uh, you heard these two gentlemen, uh, on their views. Whoever you agree with, uh, get out there and support that person and, uh, get involved.
And folks, that also means, you know, taking the time to go to your city council meetings and your county commissioner meetings. You should be in attendance to those just to know, number one, how they work. And it's really part of your civic duty. So take an opportunity to attend one of those meetings when you can. So that way, when you do find yourself in a discussion on social media, you'll actually have knowledge that you've gone to research and discovered for yourself. And maybe be able to contribute to keeping some of the rumors and mistruths that are being.
Misinformation, right.
And, and. Social media.
And I think it's important that, uh, the viewers get involved in these council meetings and council committees so that the squeaky wheel doesn't always get the oil. You know, you, 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 we need more people out there involved.
Absolutely. So folks, we wanna thank you once again. We hope this episode has been informative and is useful to you as you make your. Uh, decisions on who you're gonna vote for. Uh, early voting for Bernie begins on.
April twenty second.
Twenty second. May the fourth.
Right.[1753.68]